For August 21st, 2024. Once again, we have two regular members who are not with us this evening. So both Hector and Diana are seated for the meeting. And with that, we'll begin with a review.
Would you like me to do a roll call first?
Oh, very good idea. Thank you for reminding me, Brian. Please.
Sure, let's see. Mr. Pachas.
Present.
Ms. Wells.
Here.
Ms. Jordan Byron.
Present.
Ms. Langgallis.
Allison.
Mr. Bryce.
Present.
Mr. Rowena.
Here.
Ms. Lankowski.
Here.
And Mr. Schumann.
Here.
All right, you have a call.
Okay, the first order of business is 2022-39SP. Norwalk Hospital Association, 34 Maple Street. They are requesting a two-year extension of time for the construction of their seven-story addition to the existing hospital. Who is representing? Attorney Sachi, you're representing the hospital?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I am.
Okay, please go ahead.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. For the record, my name is Liz Sachi. I'm a partner at Carnby, Torrent, Sandak, and Hennessy, and I represent Norwalk Hospital, NuVance Health. Also present tonight is John Stary of NuVance Health and David Keith, since if you should have any questions with respect to this request. Just by way of background, in 2022, this commission in October of 2022, approved the new inpatient pavilion of the hospital. We secured a one-year extension of time in October of 2023, which will expire in this coming October. So we're before you for a two-year extension rather than a one-year, and the reasons for that are several. Just by way of information, the hospital has reported the certificate of special permit. It reported the approved site plan. And it also recorded the OSA, Office of State Traffic Administration, decision. It applied for a zoning permit in February 2023. So it was clearly on the way to move forward with all the necessary permits in the timeframe established by the extension granted last year. However, one of the things that remained outstanding that has been in large measure the reason for this request was that there is a proposal to move the behavioral unit from the hospital campus off-site. That had to be reviewed by the appropriate state agency. Initially, that went on for some time, the review, and that request was denied. So the hospital then had to reconfigure and determine where that behavioral unit would then be placed within the hospital campus. It took some time to do that, but that has been resolved, and the hospital is now working to finalize plans for that behavioral unit to come back on the campus, and it would be going into the Dana Building. Accordingly, the plans and the permits for the patient pavilion had to be put on hold while that issue was resolved, since that behavioral unit location needed to be secured. So we're back before you for another extension. We thought it would be more appropriate to seek two years rather than one year in the event that next year around this time, we're close but not quite there. We would have to come before you again. But between Mr. Stary and Mr. Keith, they're confident that a two-year extension, which would bring us into 2026, would be more than sufficient. In fact, the hope is that construction will have commenced by first quarter of 2026, so we would need to be before you. It certainly is within your jurisdiction and control to approve whatever request you deem appropriate. But given the scope of this project and how crucial it is, not only to NuVance, Norwalk Hospital, but citizens of Norwalk, we thought that it would be appropriate to ask for two years and not have to bother you again a year from now. If you have any questions for me or for Mr. Stary and Mr. Keith, we're happy to answer them.
Are there questions? I have only a related question. And that is that some time ago, we heard that NuVance was going to be merging with Northwell Health. Is that still something that's on the table?
It is. It is.
Is it on the table in the sense that it's something that's happening or something that you're expecting might happen?
No, it's in process. We're filed with the Federal Trade Commission, of course, state of Connecticut and state of New York. We anticipate it could take up to a year to get all the approvals necessary.
Is that likely in any way to interfere with moving forward?
No, not at all.
Okay, good. Anything else for Attorney Sachi or Mr. Stary?
Well, thank you, Attorney Sachi, for giving a great explanation. I just want to explain a little bit more. Not only the reason for this extension is our current behavior health unit is in one of the buildings that is planned to be demoed. So that is part of the major problem. And with a behavioral health unit, it is not easy just to relocate to any other nursing unit you have in a hospital because of all of the anti-litterature and safety requirements. So that's why we had decided after getting our CON denied from the state, we appealed it. It got denied a second time. So we decided to move forward with just the relocation of the unit. To do that, we have to go through a full design, which is underway currently with SLAM Architectural out of Glastonbury. We anticipate to have that design complete by the end of this calendar year, and we'll be going through the appropriate permit process with the city and then hope to break ground in the Dana Building in no later than January. We anticipate that project could take up to 12 months to complete and allow us to occupy moving our behavior health unit into it, and then allows us to move forward with that new bed tower in, again, the first quarter of '26. So hopefully, that explains a little bit more of the reason for the delay.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to offer the two-year extension to the hospital? Okay, Mr. Pachas has made motion. Is there a second? And Ms. Langgallis has seconded. JJ has also seconded. Any discussion among ourselves or any final questions? All right, if not, Brian, let's do a roll call on this.
Sure. Let's see. Ms. Jordan Byron?
Yes.
Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Pachas?
Yes.
Ms. Langgallis?
Yes.
Mr. Bryce?
Yeah.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Ms. Lankowski?
Yes.
And Mr. Schumann?
Yes.
That is unanimous.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda, 2024-43SP, special permit CAM, 50 Day Street LLC, 165 Water Street, District 2, Block 83, Lot 9, robot competition venue within existing two-story, 54,000-square-foot building. This is just a preliminary review, and we need to take no action at this time. Who is going to be presenting for the owner?
I am, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the commission. Good evening. Again, for the record, my name is Liz Sachi. I'm a partner at Carnby, Torrent, Sandak, and Hennessy, and I represent the owner of the property, 50 Day Street, and also the co-applicant, Norwalk Havoc Robotics. Norwalk Havoc Robotics was founded by Austin McCord. He would have been present this evening as well to answer any questions, but he had a conflict. But Mr. McCord has indicated that whenever the public hearing is scheduled, and we hope that is on September 21st, he will be present and available for questions. Present tonight is Kelly Beederman. She is the CFO of Norwalk Robotics, Ryan Sasslow of Norwalk Robotics, Phil Saron, and Will Capel of Saron Architects. They are Project Architects, Peter Romano of Landtech, and Veronica Prezioso of Hardison and Hanover, which prepared the traffic and parking analysis. Just some information by way of background. The application was submitted to the city on July 24th, and neighbors were notified in accordance with your new requirements by certified mail return receipt requested on July 31st. And I believe a packet has been returned. If it hasn't, it will be. And of course, whenever you schedule your public hearing, the same type of notice will be sent in accordance with the regulations, and the sign that is required now will also be posted on Water Street. So the applicant before you is 50 Day Street and Havoc Robotics LLC. The property is 165 Water Street, District 2, Block 83, Lot 9. It's the former Trudy Toys facility, for those of you who remember. And for those who are a little, not quite have the same history as the rest of us, it was also the site of Claff's lighting corporate headquarters. This lot is about 1.85 acres. It's improved with a 54,000-square-foot two-story building, which had been the corporate offices of Claff's. What we propose to do by way of the special permit and coastal site plan applications that were submitted is to allow a robotics competition venue within the structure. A little bit of history on how this came to be. The property had previously been zoned industrial number one, and at that time, commercial recreation was allowed, and I don't know if this use would have fit neatly into that definition, but we thought it might have. Mr. McCord and his entities purchased the properties in 2020, right during COVID. He commenced using the property as a robotics venue, and they take place approximately seven times a year, seven Saturdays out of the year. It was then discovered that that use did not have permits, and we had to figure out, well, how can the use continue? So last year, we applied for and received a temporary two-year non-renewable permit through the zoning board of appeals. That two-year permit is halfway through its lifespan, so there's another year left on it. But as part of your regulation change in the past, the past year, and the regulation is becoming effective in February, we came up with a definition for robotics competition venue, and that became a use permitted by a special permit in the SDLI zone, which is now the current classification of the property. That's how come we're before you right now. And if some of you are aware that there have been competitions ongoing that had been there with permit to your non-renewable temporary through the zoning board of appeals. So what's the proposal? It really is to continue to use the building and the grounds as it has been. First of all, during the year, for the vast majority of the time, the property is vacant with the exception of staff for Norwalk Robotics, and Kelly Beederman will give you some information on that in just a minute. The first floor generally is used for office, small office area. There is a large video control area, and the vast majority of the site is where the robotics competitions are held. For those of you who have never been to one, there are eight locations or eight competition booths within the back of the building. And individuals and teams, they devise, they create, they design, and then they manufacture these robots that then fight one another. There are three-pound, 12-pound, and 30-pound types of robots. Individuals fight their robots. There are teams that compete against one another. And the competitions take place, as I said, on Saturdays. Folks come from all around the world to attend, to watch, and to compete. There are teams from Norwalk High School, Darian High School, ASML. Some teams from NASA have come. And then the interesting thing about this use, it is now being streamed worldwide. So the robotic competition sport has really gained a great degree of popularity and interest, not only with aficionados that did this in their basement or in church basements or at high school level. It's really become a sport that has gained prominence worldwide in this area. It's something that enables youngsters who are not typically engaged in or interested in sports or music or drama, another opportunity to be a participant in a team building and individual activity. It combines mathematics, physics, engineering, and manufacturing, all giving kids and others the opportunity to develop and strengthen their STEM skills. So that's what this is all about, to allow this use that's been ongoing since 2020 to continue with the proper permits. A special permit under this commission, should you approve it, and then the obviously coastal site plan, since the property is within the coastal zone. There are approximately 93 parking spaces on site. My client also owns an adjoining property. He has provided parking on other properties he owns, since those spaces are not used on Saturdays. He has worked out friendly agreements with SNU, which is across the way, allowing us to use some of their spaces, provided we don't conflict with their needs. There is the Calvary Baptist Church in the general vicinity, with which we have worked out an agreement to use some of their parking spaces, again, provided it doesn't conflict with any events they have. There are at least four municipal parking lots within walking distance. So we think that it's been well-considered and well-thought-out, and it hasn't had any issues. It hasn't created any issues in the neighborhood that we are aware of. Lastly, my client hires off-duty police officers to not only be present at the site, but also to patrol the area, the general vicinity and neighborhoods, to make sure that property owners' driveways are not being blocked, store owners are not being blocked, parking is being handled in an appropriate way. And as I said, so far, there have not been any issues that we have been made aware of for any of the competitions that we've had. At this point, if you wouldn't mind, I would just like Mr. Romano to bring you up to speed on the site plan. But beforehand, Ms. Beederman, if you wouldn't mind just sharing any other information that you have that I haven't already provided, a couple, you know, just maybe two minutes or so, in case the commissioners have any other questions about what goes on and how it goes on. And then we'll wrap up our brief presentation to you with Mr. Romano, Mr. Saron. And if you have any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Sure. Thank you so much, Liz, and thank you to the commission for the time and opportunity to talk about our league. I'm happy to answer any question you have about the tournaments. And I'm not sure if any of you have been able to attend them, but we'd be happy to have any of you to an upcoming tournament. But yes, I'm the CEO of Havoc Robotics, which organizes NHRL or the National Havoc Robot League, which was previously known as the Norwalk Havoc Robot League. And as Liz mentioned, we've been operating at the 165 Water Street facility since 2020. I joined the league in 2021. And since then, the international appeal of the sport has grown immensely because of our opportunity to operate. And we've been able to bring in builders from all over the world to each of our tournaments. We write a visa letter for pretty much every tournament at this point, with participants coming from every continent but Africa and Antarctica, what we're hopeful for the Penguins. And we are, you know, really just thrilled to be able to provide this kind of a service to people from all over the world, as well as in the local community. As Liz mentioned, we have participants from local schools. We've managed to build a team up at ASML, which also is involved with us through a sponsorship arrangement. And so we have, you know, ties with that. We also bring in lots and try to work as much as we can with local businesses. So working with local restaurants to help to provide catering and also food trucks for our spectators and fans who attend. We bring in local vendors. Eco Evolution Coffee sets up a booth, Space Cat, other local Connecticut businesses that come and vend at our space. And then, of course, you know, the hotels that accommodate all of our travelers who are coming from around the country and around the world for each of the tournaments. So typically, we fill up a hotel and a half for each of the tournaments. So it's definitely helping to bring a lot of business to the local economy. We have been really proactive, understanding that we have a lot of responsibility as an event organizer to focus on public safety. As Liz mentioned, we work very closely with both the Norwalk Police Department as well as the Norwalk Fire Department. We have a security consultant on our team. We have a first aid director who's an off-duty EMT at all of our tournaments. In addition to that, as well as state-level police and fire who are there from a safety precaution standpoint. So we take our responsibilities very seriously on that front. And we, you know, as Liz mentioned, really focus a lot on how we can ensure that our events are not disruptive to members of the neighborhood and work to ensure that our police presence is helping to keep the streets clear and ensuring that we don't have any complaints, which we have fortunately not had any to date that we're aware of. But happy to answer any other questions that you might have about the league and our events.
Well, yes, I do have a question.
Sure.
Hi, I'm JJ. So I'm glad that you mentioned about food vendors, because I was actually thinking about that. Like, if you're going to have food on site, and how is that handled? So you actually answered my question. All right. And so as far as recycling garbage, you know, receptacles, those are clear and visible?
Yes, yes. We've got plenty of trash and recycling receptacles around the building. And then we have staff that help to maintain that throughout the day, as well as commercial trash disposal that is managed by our founder, Austin.
Right, right. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Beederman, how long do these competitions last?
They typically start in the morning on Saturdays around 9:00 AM, and they run until about 10:30 PM. So it's a long day.
But Kelly, the amount, the people that attend, some will attend all day, but not all will stay for the entire duration of that, you know, 15 hours.
That's correct. So we typically have people who attend, you know, sometimes for an hour or two, others who attend for longer periods. But it's definitely, it ebbs and flows throughout the day.
So just a follow-up question. So you mentioned about overflow parking, that you have an agreement with Calvary Baptist Church, so on and so forth. So how is that notified for the congregation? How would they know that their parking area is being used by your venue?
The church would notify their community. But again, the church is typically not used on Saturdays, except for when there are services. And if there are services, we communicate. Yeah, so when there are services, we are in communication with the church and are aware that we're not able to offer that parking to our customers. And so we revise our communications to our customers to advise them to use any of the other lots where we've made those arrangements that are unaffected. But we work with not only the church. We also own two other lots in the immediate vicinity that we direct people to. We've formed relationships with the Department of Taxation and Finance across the street, with 149 Water Street next door to us, which has tenant parking as well as non-numbered spaces, which we direct our customers to. There are many municipal lots within walking distance that we also highlight on a map that we send out to everyone for each of the tournaments. So all of our ticket holders are aware of all of those things in advance. And then there's also, of course, street parking that we can direct people to as well. So we do try to ensure that we direct people to a variety of different overflow lots.
So when the venue is not in play, when you don't have the competition, who is utilizing the parking lots?
No one other than our team. We've loaned parking spaces and, again, struck agreements. The church will sometimes use our parking lot when they need it. Other businesses have asked for a space that we've been able to offer them because we have that parking that isn't necessary. But really, it's just these, you know, several Saturdays a year where we're hosting these tournaments where the parking lot is an issue for us. Otherwise, we've got a small team of about 10 full-time employees and a couple of contractors. So typically, we have, you know, an abundance of parking on typical non-event days.
Terrific. Thank you.
No problem.
Go ahead, Diana.
What is the headcount capacity of the facility when it's, you know, you're having a tournament in place, Kelly?
So the headcount capacity is around 1,000. I think a little bit higher than that. We've, Ryan, I think we've got somebody that's coming and doing another inspection for us to reconfirm that, but it's around 1,000, 1,200.
And typically, how many cars does that bring in?
It depends on the number of competitors. We don't have a specific number of cars. But again, we have our onsite parking and then a number of spaces that we have negotiated that have, to date. And then, again, within walking distance, the municipal parking. So we haven't had any issues, and we haven't had to count physically the number of vehicles that come. But again, throughout the day, people are coming in and going. And so it ebbs and flows. We never have, you know, 1,200 people in the building at any specific point in time. That's just the max capacity.
And you have enough restroom facilities so that people don't have to go out and find other facilities?
Yes, we do.
Okay, thank you.
Just for your information, Commissioner Lankowski, the Norwalk Fire Department, of course, has always been very concerned not only about the robotic use. Then there are some of the robots that have certain pyrotechnic capabilities. They're very concerned about capacity, making sure that the building is not overcapacity. And they have worked very closely with Kelly. And also, we had involvement as Kelly with state police and their fire division. So there have been a variety of other agencies, not only in the city of Norwalk, but others that want to be sure that this is operated in a safe way, that those who come to visit, those who come to compete, there aren't any issues from a safety perspective.
Correct. Thank you. That's helpful.
Sure.
Do you have some way, clearly, this is quite popular. If its popularity continues to grow, do you have some way of limiting attendance?
Yes, I mean, we cap the number of tickets as well as the number of competitors that we invite to the tournaments. So we've already instituted those sorts of measures and put those in place. So we were aware of all that. We also, of course, in accordance with our relationship with the fire department, we also have somebody who's counting capacity. So we're making sure that, you know, as we reach it, we're not inviting more people in. But right now, we've been able to manage with that. And as it grows, the hope is that we can add additional venues in other parts of the country.
Thank you. I do have a question for Mr. Romano. And that is, Water Street floods with some frequency. Do your traffic plans take that into account?
I've never had a paper model with Landtech. I mean, it's, the building, they're not so concerned. It's two different questions. I guess the drainage is existing drainage right now. It is compromised down there. The storm drainage is dictated by the tides. It does flood, but the building itself is outside the 100, elevated above the 100-year flood elevation. There is really no restriction, other than a convenience or a potential impact to cars and stuff. There's really no regulation that prohibits parking lots to be in the flood zone. So unfortunately, it does flood, could potentially impact some of the vehicles there. But while there is very large pipes all through Water Street and Day Street down there, all of the outlets are restricted or constricted by the tides. And a lot of times, obviously, when storms come, tides are up. And subsequently, the storm drainage doesn't work well. There's no way to discharge it. So those parking lots actually act as some sort of detention areas where the water builds up and sits in the parking lots until the tide goes down or the storm, you know, is over with. So, yeah, it does flood down there, impacts the parking lots only, not the building.
And just to reiterate.
As part of the work you're doing for this program, to develop a plan to divert traffic coming to that site during such events, you know, when there is northeast or some other issue that's causing flooding in the area, maybe it's some signage that directs people to alternate parking outside of the flood area, for example.
Honestly, Mr. Schumann, we've not looked into that. But before the public hearing, we can, you know, some of the areas in those low-lying, flood-prone areas, they do, you probably seen, right? They have the signs up there with the elevations on the signposts showing where the water comes periodically to, you know, I would, and this is just from a practical perspective, right? If they have that kind of a storm there, I suspect that the event's not going to be going on. Right? So they might, they would diminish the amount of people that would be trying to get down to the Water Street, Day Street area down there. But I'll give you a little bit more comprehensive response before we get to the public hearing. Look at what the opportunities are to do that.
And just to reiterate, and the competitions aren't every Saturday. It's about seven to eight times a year. So and as Peter said, and I would suspect Ms. Beederman would agree, that is, if there's a warning that there is a substantial storm coming, and it's going to hit on a Saturday when there's a competition, I would imagine that for safety, from a safety perspective, there might, there would very likely be a decision that the competition's probably going to have to be canceled or postponed for everyone's sake.
With all due respect, it doesn't take a lot to flood down there.
That's very true.
Doesn't, you know, it doesn't take a substantial storm. It's just the wrong tide is sometimes enough.
You're exactly right.
There also is a benefit to the site in that it's not only accessed by Water Street. Folks can come down, you know, South Main, Woodward Avenue. They can come in and out of Day Street, Burrit. There are other avenues to get in and out. But we'll look into that further and provide you with some additional information in response to your request. There are other avenues to get in and out, but we'll we'll look into that further and and provide you with some additional information in response to your request. Happy to.
Thank you.
Sure. At this point, Mr. Romano, can you kindly just walk everyone through the site plan?
I'm sorry, it's it's after Kelly's presentation. Mine is probably the most uninspiring presentation I've ever done from your commission, because really, all we did was bring the building in a, not the building even, just the site to into conformity. But I I am able to answer Mrs. Jordan Byron's answer, her question. And we, one of the two tasks we were asked to do was bring it up to conformity, which meant that we provided dumpster locations and enclosures. And then we also designated some loading docks. So, you know, the site is fully developed and very nicely developed. So it wasn't a lot for us to do. As I just explained to Mr. Schulman, there's a lot of drainage down there, but it's, you know, it's almost moot because the outlets are all covered when the tide is up. But the other thing we were asked to do, and you all know, right? Cam Coastal Area Management Site Plan application is usually meant to identify and then mitigate any impacts to any of the natural or coastal resources. And in this situation, this piece of property, first of all, is removed from the shoreline. Secondly, is completely developed. So there is, you know, from the perspective of of no impact. I mean, they've got storm drainage in there, they've got sumps and trapits in the catch basins so that the water that goes out to Long Island Sound is is at least the sediments are separated out. But there's no coastal resources on our property, with the exception of the flood zone, which has been hit. You know, you all know, they've been around long enough down here. It's an historical problem, right? That whole area just floods. I know there's been attempts from different times to to try to rectify it. But it's a, it would be a huge undertaking to get that area out of the out of the flood zone. It would take multiple, multiple pieces of property to be all involved in the project and roadways and all that stuff to get it up and out of the flood zone down there. So from the perspective of what we're in front of you this evening for Coastal Area Management Site Plan application, there's no negative impacts. I think our report represents that, no negative impact to the coastal resources of Long Island Sound. And like I told you, the other charge we were asked to do was to look into bringing the site into conformity. The only thing that was lacking really was the designation of loading docks and the dumpster area and enclosure, which you typically see on a on a brand new building, they, this was just lacking for whatever reason. Might have been done at a time when it wasn't really required, but so those two little things got added to the plan. So the the site conforms to the the city of Norwalk's planning zoning regulations for a site plan. I'd be happy to answer any questions if anybody has dumpster or loading dock questions.
If not, perhaps we'll have Mr. Saron or Mr. Cable just walk through the first and second floor plans. And that will probably conclude the introductory presentation for tonight. The only request that I'll make is, again, if you could schedule the hearing for September twenty first, that would be helpful. Excuse me, I keep saying the twenty first, that's a Saturday, September eighteenth, I apologize. If you could make sure we schedule that so that that gives us sufficient time to send out notices by way of legal notices, letters to neighbors, and also get the signs up.
And by the way, Liz, you couldn't be there on the twenty first, even if it was a hearing.
Oh, I could be there on the twenty first.
Your daughter's way, isn't it?
I couldn't be there on the seventh, and I can't be there in October, but this twenty first, I can. Nonetheless, Mr. Saron or Mr. Cable?
So Liz, it's a good evening. It's Phil Saron. I'm an architect. My office is in Fairfield, Connecticut. With me is Will Cable. And before we walk you through the plans, I just wanted to make a few comments related to some of the questions and things that have come up. We have worked with the local building and fire officials and we've done calculations to maximize what the occupant loads are on the building, make sure we have all the proper egresses from the building, did plumbing fixture counts, and in fact, have submitted documents to the building department and the fire marshal that they've approved to make sure that we do have all the required egress and plumbing fixtures for the building based on the occupant load. In fact, we exceed the number of public plumbing fixtures based on the actual occupant load of the building. So I just wanted you to know that we have done everything to make sure that the building's been up, is up to code or being brought up to code. So with that said, I'm going to let Will just kind of walk you through the floor plans and then we'll answer any questions.
Great. Hi, everybody. Starting on the first floor, we have both the lobby and production offices in the front of the building. The batch large space is the event space. And off to the side, we have a deck where Kelly mentioned the food truck vendors are usually outside. And that's where everybody takes their break. It's roughly about twenty six thousand square feet per floor. And up on the second floor, we have both office space for the robot lead and the event build space. And that's just about it.
So the way that, so the way the function works is on the first floor is where they have all of the events. The cages are actually glass, glass explosion proof cages. And then if somebody's robot breaks or they need to be fixed or rebuilt or whatever, they use the second floor for all of the people to to fix their robots or build their robots. And it's it's quite a scene when it's being done. I mean, it's, I encourage all you guys to go there at one point and actually see this in action. It's pretty interesting.
The second floor is almost like a pit at the Indianapolis Speedway. Something, a tire comes falling off, they go into the pit. It's very, very similar concept. If there's an issue with one of the robots that's on, that's competing, that owner, team, or individual can go upstairs and and work on it and do the repairs.
I think they actually refer to it as the pit.
Thank you.
Would the lab that was on the first floor still be used for repairs?
See, the first floor.
So, Will, can you go back to the first floor?
Here we go.
So I think the lab that's on the first floor, and either Ryan or somebody on your team can chime in, but I think the lab on the first floor is used for just minor repairs. And there's use more from the team members that work there on a daily basis, not from the the people that are there, the contestants.
That's right.
Kelly, am I correct?
That's correct, yes. The the upstairs portion is is referred to as the pits. And that is where most of the competitors spend their time doing their repairs.
Awesome. Thank you.
No problem.
Does anyone have any comments of our questions for Mr. Saron or Mr. Cable?
No, I don't have a question in regards to the design. I just have a question in regards to how the public can can see this. Is it televised?
Yes, so we have a YouTube channel as well as a TikTok and an Instagram, but we live stream all of the tournaments to YouTube. And we also produce a lot of social media content after the fact. We actually were recently also featured on ESPN with a thirty minute special. So we have a show that's available to watch there as well.
Thank you.
And also, there's bleachers in the in the arena. So people, where those in the middle of the, Will, can you just point out where the bleachers are? So those are bleachers there so people can actually sit there and watch these these battles going on.
Wow.
Kelly, when is the next event?
September fourteenth.
Anyone have any other questions at this point?
Liz, I just had, oh, sorry, go ahead. I just had one, Liz, there was, I believe, the the owner of this property also owns those two or three properties to the south on Burrit Avenue.
Yes.
And they were considering potentially turning those into some sort of park. I just want to clarify that those were not considered as part of the the parking management plan.
Well, initially, they were, but the city approached Mr. McCord to create a pocket park there. So that was those sixty or so spaces that we were, there weren't, they weren't regulation spaces at eight and a half by nineteen with requisite backup. It was just parking that, however many spaces could be accommodated there. I have not seen the plan for the the pocket park that the city requested be created. But there's more than ample parking, whether it's on our site of approximately ninety spaces or next door at Fifty Day Street or at one forty nine or in the vicinity to accommodate the needs that that we have and then the offsite spaces. There's also, as I understand it, Kelly, correct me if I'm wrong, for some competitors who who stay in downtown Norwalk, there's a shuttle service that is provided to them so their cars would remain at the hotel. And then, of course, the South Newark Train Station, which brings some visitors and to to see the competition, that's within walking distance as well. But that parking lot to the south, which used to have a house on it, that was initially included in our our materials that we provided, at least in in explanation of that, but the pocket park came about afterward.
Thank you.
Sure. I don't know if, I'm sorry, excuse me.
Oh, sorry, I had another question. How is the facility used outside of outside of competition day? Like, what's it used for the not seven days of the year?
It's really just office. Sorry, go ahead.
It's generally just office for the robotic league, the offices that are depicted on the plans. There isn't anything else that goes on on the second floor where that's reserved for the the repairs in the pit. It's really very limited use. I think the the number of employees is less than ten on any given day that that come to the site either by car or some come by train and walk to the site. So it's very, very quiet on non competition days, which is the vast majority of the year.
That's correct. It's it's typically, as Liz said, just office space and then maintenance of the event space. You know, repairs and and tech upgrades and things like that.
Thank you.
So a traffic study was undertaken. We're happy to have Ms. Presioso comment on that unless you want to leave that until the public hearing. But I did want to mention that we've received sign offs from the fire department, the water department, Water Pollution Control Authority. We've received some comments from Public Works and additional comments from TMP, both at the beginning of the month and then some more yesterday. Those comments from TMP and DPW, we're working on and will respond to those probably just after Labor Day. But it's it's whatever your pleasure is, if you'd like to have some information or if you just want to hold off on that.
Well, we're going to hear an awful lot of this over again on September eighteenth. Unless there's a member of the commission who specifically wants to hear about the traffic tonight, I can certainly live without hearing about it tonight.
Okay. Well, that concludes what we wanted to to present to you tonight on an introductory basis. Just ask that you schedule the hearing date so we can get our notices out. And then we will respond to all the outstanding comments and questions from DPW and zoning staff as well and TMP.
Okay, well, staff is here this evening. They've heard your request that it be on the agenda for the eighteenth.
Yeah, I would anticipate that that shouldn't be a problem on our end, Liz.
That's great. Thank you very much. We'll make sure that we we properly handle notification. We're looking forward to seeing you again on the eighteenth, not on the twenty first. Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Okay. Next is discussion with TMP, traffic, mobility, and parking. I don't see Jim Travers, but I do see Garrett Pallila. And as we discussed when we were talking about this among ourselves, I guess we want to hear about complete streets and we'd like to hear Garrett, generally, what the role of TMP is and how it fits in with our decision making.
Great. So can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can.
All right, perfect. So if you don't mind, I'm going to share my screen. It's helpful when talking about complete streets to have some visuals. You should see on your screen, I prepared a brief presentation.
We do.
All right, perfect. But, yeah, as you mentioned, you know, what we wanted to do tonight is give a little bit of an overview of complete streets. So for some, it may be new, and others, just to catch you up on all the activities that have happened over the past two years as we've been working on this. Want to talk a little bit about the the policy and where we're at with the design guide and then provide like a brief timeline and update for the project. But I wanted to do all of this in the framework of our roles and responsibilities and how that relates to development review. So just just to start off, just as a brief overview of what complete streets is. When we talk about complete streets, we're talking about streets designed for everyone, designed for people, whether that's walking, biking, driving cars, transit, using micro mobility, which has really exploded in the recent years. And I want to highlight, it's looking at the streets for all ages and all abilities. So from children all the way up to the elderly and those with any mobility challenges, making sure that we accommodate for them. And it is a really holistic approach, looking at projects and developments all the way from the preliminary stages in planning throughout the design process, making sure we look at maintaining complete streets during construction. And then also how we maintain our streets to make sure that we're maintaining access and mobility for all modes in the process. That's just a high level overview of of what complete streets is. This is an example of a cross section of complete streets. It really extends beyond what we traditionally have looked at with road design. So when you see our reviews, you'll see comments not just related to what's in in between the curb, but also what's along the curb side and and really comments related to the entirety of the roadway. So we're looking at things on the curb side, like on and off street bicycle facilities. We're trying to better accommodate all of the activities, for example, that might happen with multi use development, whether that's maybe on street parking didn't exist before and the development comes in and the road didn't have it before, but we need to accommodate and support the local businesses that will be on the first level. Also, all the loading that might need to occur. There's been an explosion of transportation network companies, whether that's Uber and Lyft, and making sure that there's spaces designed so that they can service passengers and patrons, but not interrupt traffic. And we just did a complete streets demonstration project and we temporarily removed the right turn lane and placed a parklet, which is just really an extension of the public space, but that in the future could be used in like things such as on street dining. We also really look at with complete streets, providing a really high quality pedestrian zone. So you'll see that element shown here on the cross section. But we're we're looking beyond just safety. I think, you know, the P O C D and the Transportation Master Plan really identified that we want high quality networks, we want a multimodal city, we want a walkable city. And it's really looking at not just providing the bare minimum for facilities, but making sure that they're comfortable and attractive and that people will use them. I had a really great conversation at a public meeting with a member of the community. And we were just talking about the Route One Core though in the upcoming study. And there's sidewalks along that whole street and they said, well, I never really thought about walking on that street. But, you know, we dug a little bit deeper and it's really just the sidewalks are right against, you know, two lanes of traffic in one direction, a four lane roadway. And it's just, it's just not comfortable and the sidewalks don't feel continuous. They're really, they're broken and they're bisected. And they kind of stop at all the driveways. So it was just really, really interesting to hear and and what complete streets is, is is trying to make sure that not only we're accommodating for safety, but we're also looking at the experience and and creating value and also place making features. And and I know this is a, this cross section makes it look like the roadway needs to be really wide. But I do want to emphasize, you know, when we look at development review and with the forthcoming complete streets legislation and the design guide, we're looking at really context sensitive solutions. So it's a street may have some of these elements, you know, it may have all of these elements. It may have a select portion of these elements. So not every street will look the same. And it's really giving, whether it's developers or our department, flexibility to make sure our designs are context sensitive and they also complement the existing land uses. So here at the bottom of the screen, you can kind of just see the different cross sectional elements, you know, the frontage between the developments and the buildings, the pedestrian zone, the curb side. And we'll talk about a little bit more about this as we go forward. But I want to emphasize, complete streets is really when we look at developments and review, it's really about providing a high quality, consistent and connected network. So when we get an application, oftentimes, we we have a traffic access and impact study. You know, it could be a couple hundred pages. As we start to review that, we look at that in conjunction with the site plan. And we start to look at the cross section of the roads, not just in front of the development, but we also look at the needs of the development and how that applies to, you know, the adjacent roadways and intersections, making sure that everything is connected. So the next slide just talks a little bit about, just to put complete streets in context. You know, this is really consistent with the P O C D, the Plan of Conservation and Development. It really identified the need to adopt complete streets. And it's also consistent with the goals of the the most recent Transportation Master Plan update. The complete streets package that that we're really putting together really, it really has three components. So when we started this, you know, the three. Um, so when we started this, you know, the three components, what we were looking at is the adoption of legislation, um, which was introduced, first introduced to the ordinance committee in um June of this year. Uh, and will be uh taken back up um as early as September this year um in draft form and then looking potentially at having a public hearing for that ordinance. But that's really what enables this entire process and we're hoping uh to wrap that up by the end of this year. Um, what the ordinance does is it recognizes the need for the creation of a design guide. So in um, whether it's the the zoning regulations, the recently updated regulations that reference the city's roadway standards through this complete streets process, we're updating our roadway standards and really packaging it as a complete streets design guide, which will have a lot more information um, for anyone that does work in a city, any agency, whether that is a city agency or it is a developer or it is the state, um, and it will allow for the creation of these context-sensitive solutions. Um, but our our s- complete streets legislation um really works around the the framework of the six principles you see there. Uh, making sure we have an equitable network, um, making sure we have a a resilient network with lots of redundancy. So uh, for example, when a bridge fails, we still have uh viable means of mobility. Um, or when a a link is taken out because of flooding, there's alternatives. Um, you know, we're a safety department first. And also the complete streets legislation will look at opportunities to uh improve the environment, whether that's through air quality or better handling stormwater. Um, so those are just some of the things that the the legislation will really help us to address. Um, you know, I I go back to why why we really need this approach and um, just the, this is a really great graphic. On the left, you can see what is our historical functional classification of roadways. So there is really four to five different types of roadways. Um, the challenge was uh it was just a one-size-fits-all approach. And what we're really looking to do with complete streets is we've looked at all the new zoning updates, um, the new land uses. Um, applied that and then almost doubled, you'll see on the right, uh, the roadway network into um more or less nine to ten different typologies. Um, and it just, it just provides more context-sensitive design. So we don't want a one-size-fits-all approach when we're looking at our roads or or looking at uh new developments. Um, for example, when you have an arterial roadway that runs through the city, you want it to be different when it runs through a neighborhood or a business or a village center. And that's exactly what complete streets will allow us to do. It'll have more case uses through typologies and it'll allow more context-sensitive design. Um, so when we need slower speeds in a really pedestrian-friendly setting, um, we'll have the ability to do that. And practitioners will ha- have the ability to adjust their design standards and have that flexibility. This slide I included just just to show um how complete streets will address some of the other city priorities. Um, looking at things like uh reducing the the city right away is our largest opportunity to reduce um impervious surface. Um, it's our largest opportunity to plant green infrastructure, uh, to increase our tree canopy. So the design guidance will be in alignment with those values. It'll allow a lot of flexibility, but it will help us address our environmental issues. Um, you know, when we look at site plan applications, I'm sure you've seen a lot of comments related to amenity areas and the opportunities for street trees or the opportunities for green infrastructure. Um, that's something that we are, we've been looking at for the past uh several years since I joined the department, the last four years. But this process will really help us memorialize that. Um, on the right, you see a crash map. Um, you know, we're primarily a safety department. Uh, safety is really our number one priority. I think in the last five years, um, there is over twenty-six thousand crashes on Norwalk's Road um, with ten percent of those um resulting in some kind of injury. Um, so we're really looking at with every application that we see forth, the crash data that's provided, our database, looking at risk factors and making sure that a new development won't exacerbate conditions, um, but make sure it will make decent made safer for all different modes. So thi- this slide is just really a summary of um the the process. Um, as I mentioned, the legislation is moving forward. It will be taken back up by the ordinance committee in September. Uh, the next slide, I'll I'll show you um a a sneak peek of what the design guide looks like and um some of the design elements that we're looking at and how that relates to our development or review. Um, we're working on integration plan to make sure that the adoption uh is institutionalized as with throughout the city. And as part of this engagement process, we did uh our demonstration day uh in June. Um, and you can see at the intersection of North Main Street and Ann Street, what this actually looks like in implementation. Um, it's, it was a really unique project. Um, I'll talk a little bit more about it in the future. But when you think about uh North Main Street and Ann Street in Norwalk, it's in Sono, it's one of our more walkable areas. But we were able to do through some quick implementation um measures, uh, make the intersection feel a lot more comfortable for people, get slower speeds for drivers, um, increase public space, add some art. Uh, so if you haven't had a chance to look at it, I just encourage you to go out um and and walk it and see how you feel. Um, you know, we are still collecting feedback. Um, we anticipate that we'll stay out there until uh inclement weather in the fall. I just wanted to, at a really high level, just just talk about there's um what we looked at. So through our process, um, you know, we looked at best practices for complete streets. Um, there's a number of cities and municipalities in Connecticut we anticipate will be the sixteenth to adopt some some type of legislation or design guide. Um, but with our process, um, you see a number of columns at the top. We're we're really doing it all in Norwalk. Um, we're gonna have uh a reference and and design guide, which looks at best practices throughout the nation. We're gonna have a checklist uh for developers to look at, to make sure that when they do a traffic in access impact study or when they prepare a site plan that they've um studied and investigated all the different measures and concerns uh related to any type of mode. Um, there'll be a complete streets committee to look at an exception process. Uh, we'll have annual reporting. And really what this complete streets is, is it's really a toolbox um that allows us to make real meaningful change in the community. And it sets us up to achieve uh Vision Zero, which is uh one of uh the mayor's top priorities. Um, and Vision Zero is just looking at how we eliminate uh fatal and serious injuries on our roadways. But we can't do it without the tools and that's what complete streets is. So this slide, um, again, it just shows, you know, some national trends for crashes. Um, you know, we're just seeing a rise in crashes with for vulnerable re- road users, just further cementing why um we need to do this. Um, on the left, you just see all the components of, I won't read through all of them. Um, but that really are captured by the the draft um complete streets legislation um, in which we believe is going to make the project successful. I wanted to stop and spend a little time on on this slide. Um, and then we're getting close to the end of the presentation. Want to provide a lot of opportunities for questions. Uh, but this is just an excerpt from the design guide. Um, so this is something that when we look at site plans, we're taking into account all of these dimensional standards, um, looking at all these modal priorities for the development and for the street and all these design elements on a project-by-project basis. These are, this is just an example of if a project were in the downtown, all the different things we're considering today, but that we're going to memorialize with complete streets and have an actual guide that really explicitly um prescribes what to look at, um, what are some of the the ranges of variables, whether that be the width of a sidewalk or if a bike lane can be accommodated, when you, what you should consider on the curb side um in relation to your development, whether that's providing some type of flex space, you know, loading, what should that look like, the need for parking on street. Um, this is all stuff we look at. You can see at the bottom, there's um place-making features, making sure that the public environment is attractive, um, that things are being considered in a downtown, like making sure that the frontage of the development includes street trees um, or some type of beautification or some type of feature like benches. Um, this is really us memorializing it, but also it would be a really powerful tool and allow people to evaluate trade-offs um in all the decision-making. But there'll be nine or ten different sheets just like this for all the different type of roadways and they'll all be really flexible and designed. I spoke a little bit about this before, but I just wanted to include on some photos of the demonstration day project. And if you just look on the right, um, we reclaimed a tremendous amount of unused asphalt on the roadway with a quick-hit project. Um, you know, ultimately, we'd like to look for something based on the feedback, which has been really positive, something more permanent and hardscape. But this just allows us to pilot, test and get feedback. Um, and the feedback has been really positive. But you can see on the right side, we reclaimed space for sidewalk. Um, if you're familiar with that side of North Main Street today, it's on two different levels. Is very challenging um for anyone with uh mobility challenges. There's not a lot of clear width. Um, the grades are challenging to navigate. There's poles and appurtenances uh within people's path. So we created this just clear space that pedestrians can bypass that area, also access to crosswalks, um, provide shorter crosswalks, start to calm traffic through the area. And then on the left side of that image, you can just see the amount of public space we were able to uh give back and then also also activate. So this is just an example of of what could be. Um, but it was one of the the main uh features of the complete streets project.
I I love it. I live in the area. I would love to see this extended.
Yeah, and complete streets really allows us to do that. Um, we would like to do more of the projects. Um, I, you know, ultimately what we look at is based on the feedback. You know, we look at how we can budget and budget for a future project to make that hardscape um, and make it it permanent and lasting, um, and then develop a plan. So, you know, the intention of that project is not to be a be-all, end-all, uh, but to be a stepping stone to uh a larger project for that intersection in that neighborhood. Um, and we could add things like trees and then improve the lighting and all of those things at that that time. But I I wanted to, so um, I spoke a little bit about uh complete streets, um, a little bit about the development review process. But I did want to uh leave it open to questions that you may have about our our processes, uh, whether it's related to complete streets or or development review, site plan review, um, or anything of that nature.
Yeah, I I have a comment and a question. Uh, one of the comments is, uh, I had a chance to take part in the uh like community project there and uh that was a really great and engaging day. Um, so thank you guys for putting that on. Um, as far as the question goes, I'm curious to see if um there's any amendments that that we need to consider to permit uh neither the on-street or sidewalk, um, amendment zones, um, from like a zoning perspective.
So yeah.
Yeah, um, so I think once, yeah, I think we'll coordinate with T M P pretty closely on when, especially on that map that Garrett showed where they had the different roadway classifications. Because if you'll, if you'll think, uh, we, for certain street types, we required mixed-use building types. And that was really, we could only choose from arterials or collectors or things like that. So once the 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 complete streets guide is out, we'll be able to coordinate with T M P to say, to look at those more specific street types and then make those changes. And then, yeah, I'm sure we'll definitely coordinate with with Garrett and Jim to make more updates.
Great. And then uh another question I had was, um, if there was uh more information about those like nine to ten different uh roadway typologies, uh, so we can read a little bit more about that and and digest that a little bit more. I appreciated the the maps and description of that a little bit, but would love to to read through that a bit more if that's available.
Yeah, so we're working on a draft right now. We're about sixty percent complete. Um, we're starting to share internally with different city agencies to get comments. Um, what we really do is we we hope to have a a public draft for consumption um before the end of the year. Um, and the intention is for that to be a a forward-facing document, just like the other roadway standards for the city. Um, and whenever it would go through modifications or changes, there would be a public comment process um, to provide transparency, um, and then to also to get public feedback. So I can't give you a date today, unfortunately. Um, it's taken an enormous amount of effort to get to a sixty percent level. Um, and what we would also anticipate is um, it it will take some time to finalize the guide. There's just a number of existing standard specifications that all have to be updated, um, either in sync with it or um shortly after uh the guides are a- adopted, so that there's consistency in application uh in between all the references. Uh, it's, you know, the the, some of our previous guides were developed, you know, many, many years ago and just haven't been updated since. And this is really the the opportunity to update the framework to be more multimodal across.
Great. Well, thank you. I'm I'm looking forward to it.
Uh, other questions for Garrett?
I do, Lou.
Please, go ahead, Tammy.
Thank you, Garrett. Thank you for your presentation. Just wondering, um, and I I do like so much of what you've accomplished um, since the T M P department was established. Um, how do you prioritize the projects?
So under this, so under the complete streets legislation, um, every, so um, every project in the city will be a complete streets project. So when any plan comes in, um, or any product for, or any project from any agency, we, it will be looked at under this purview. Um, designers will have the opportunity to use the design guide to make sure they're making all the considerations for every mode, all abilities. And then we'll also review the plans to make sure that they're consistent with the legislation um and design guides. So uh, a rising tide, um, you know, rises all boats. Um, and we think this is an opportunity to uh make sure that every project in the city works towards our ultimate goal of being multimodal, um, safer and connected. So we we also, so as a- as far as your question about the project prioritization, we have a a separate tool for that, and that's really the the Transportation Master Plan. So the Transportation Master Plan that we recently um completed at the end of uh two thousand twenty-two, that identifies all the uh needs throughout the different neighborhoods to the city. Um, and it has a number of different priorities. And it's through that that we look at the prioritization of projects. But then we apply this complete streets guide to it to make sure that we get the outcome that we desire. Does that make sense? Or or clarify the the project process?
Yeah, Garrett, um, last week I uh attended the meeting on um uh the sidewalks on uh West Rocks Road.
Um, yes.
Does a project like that um, which might be part of a complete streets design um, call for a look at the road itself as part of complete streets? Or does that uh simply stand uh stand alone because it's just a sidewalk?
So i- it it's a complete streets, but so every, again, every project's a complete streets project. And I guess I'll I'll take a step back, Tammy, to your question. Um, Lou Lou brings up a great point about the that project. So that project, the West Rocks Road Sidewalk Project, was actually identified in the Bicycle and Ped Master Plan as a top-tier corridor. So those plans, those planning studies identify the projects and then we take our complete streets guide and apply the the principles and the design standards to it. Um, and to answer your your question, Chairman, the, so the the guide will will, will, so we're looking at with the sidewalk project, we're also looking at crossings. We're looking at providing amenity areas. We're look at opportunities for um environmental improvements, where we can do street trees, increase the canopy, absorb particulates from vehicles. So we are applying all of those principles to that project. Um, we're also looking at the road. We're looking at some crossings. We're doing some drainage improvements on the road um, within this, within the scope of the the federally funded project that was provided.
Thank you. Um, is there anything else? Any other questions? All right, if not, uh, thank you very much. Uh, we appreciate uh your taking the time to meet with us.
Thank you.
All right. Oh, sorry.
Not sorry, I was just saying, thanks, Garrett.
Um, we're going to uh move to the next uh uh item. Uh, the zoning regulations, uh, revisions per the staff recommendations. Uh, Brian, um, Steve is probably driving, so um, I guess we'll tie on you.
Yeah, I'll take the bulk of this. Um, and uh, so if you'll remember at our last meeting, um, we had sent you guys that spreadsheet of issues that staff had compiled of things that we were running into with the new regs that were causing some problems in terms of um, us issuing permits or there was conflicts and contradictions within the regulations and how we're trying to clean that up and address it. So we sent to you um a memo, which I'll pull up. And the whole purpose of this memo is, we told you that here are the problems. Um, but now we're trying to put language into the regs uh to solve those problems. So for the most part, um, I believe we addressed most of those. Um, and then Steve is working on some more of the, I would say, complicated issues. Um, so he had sent you guys the impervious surface coverage memo. Um, he's working on a a height in the flood- He's working on a height in the flood zone memo. Those ones kind of need to be under separate cover because they're gonna take a little bit more explaining to 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 go over why it's a problem and how we're fixing it. So at the end of this, we'll go over the impervious surface one, and I think Steve will be able to help out with that. He just finds the memo here. All right, so I try to put this in kind of like if you're going through the regulations, just a numerical order in terms of page numbers. So I don't know, Mr. Chairman, if you wanted me to go through each one, or if you wanted, if there were any ones that people had, any any commissioners had issues with or needed more explanation on, if you wanted me to just jump to those. How would you like me to proceed? You're muted, Louis. You're muted, Lou. Still muted, Lou.
I apologize. It's going to take a good deal more time, but I think we ought to go over all of them.
Okay. So the first, and I, a lot of these are are fairly straightforward. Some have a lot of language, but it's for a straightforward issue. So this first one was in C D one L zone, which is the larger single-family lot zone. There is a discrepancy in that accessory structures were allowed to be ten feet from the side setback or the side property line, which was inconsistent with all of the other zones. For example, the C D one M or the C D one S. The accessory structure setback matched the side setback for the principal structure. So by making it thirty feet instead of ten feet, that will just kind of keep it consistent with the rest of the zones. Two, we'll go over later. That's the impervious surface coverage memo that Steve put together. Three, this is for trailers and tractor trailers and where and where they're not allowed to be stored. So this was one that took a lot of language to fix what is probably not the the largest of issues. So within each zone, it states that there are these vehicular parking requirements and where certain vehicles are allowed to be stored on a lot, if they're allowed to be stored on a lot. So the issue was in the single-family zones and the residential zones, it stated what you see here as tractor trailers, including trailers for storage, is not permitted. So the the prohibition on tractor trailers probably makes sense for the single-family zone, but not necessarily trailers, which you could customarily have to bring around jet skis or boats or other small vehicles, which people could be expected to have. So those are less problematic. So we wanted to let people have one of those as long as they were properly stored on their property. So the first fix is to create a tractor trailer definition and differentiate it from a trailer. So we are currently working on a tractor trailer definition, really looking for our enforcement staff's input on this so that they have an easily usable definition to help distinguish tractor trailers from trailers and not run afoul of any statutory language or things like that. So once we have that definition, what we're proposing to do is to separate tractor trailers from trailers within those vehicular parking requirements. And then what we need to do after that is state where if if they are allowed to be stored on a residential lot and where they're allowed to be stored on a proper residential lot. So for tractor trailers, for example, we're saying those would not be permitted in the residential zones, actually in most zones. But we would propose to allow them in C D three C because they may be customarily expected to be seen with grocery stores, the hospital, and then our light and heavy industrial zones. For trailers themselves, what we're proposing is to say that they're permitted in rear yard only for, I believe, all zones. And then what we will do is go into the accessory use table and then state if it's permitted, not permitted, permitted with limitations. So because we're saying, yes, trailers are allowed to be stored in all zones, we would put permitted with limitations for all of the zones. And then further down, we would discuss what those limitations are. And then like for typical tractor trailers, we would say those are not permitted in your residential zones or mixed-use zones, and then say permitted with limitations in those more commercial or industrial zones. So the last step to this is to put in what those limitations are, which I proposed here in the red text. So the first section is to go over storage of tractor trailers. So we would state the limitations on these are within the S D L I, that so the light industrial, heavy industrial, hospital zone and civic zone. When the storage of tractor trailers is permissible and kind of like what they are permissible in accessory to. So for example, government agencies and charitable organizations would be allowed to store a tractor trailer. A hospital would be a distribution or fulfillment facility and then a warehouse. And then sort of similarly for the C D three C, which is again, again, is kind of the Route One corridor, is that they'd be allowed to be permitted in association with a large-scale commercial building, which for lack of a better term, is a grocery store. And then just some additional limitations that they need to be properly screened. They need to be stored outside of any setbacks and similar screening requirements. And then a similar practice for just the storage of trailers. So again, this is going into your residential zones and the mixed-use zones and saying trailer, you can have one trailer on your property, provided that it's not a commercial trailer. So essentially, things like the commercial license plate, lettering, markings, things like that. You you wouldn't be allowed to do that, but you'd be allowed to have your trailer that stored stores more or transports more typical commercial or recreational vehicles. And then similarly for the more heavily, heavy industrial or light industrial and then C D three Z, three D, C D three zone. Giving them a little bit more ability to store trailers. So we'd say you could have two. And then just that you can't store them within ten feet of a side or rear property line. So it's a lot of text to kind of try to solve one seemingly minor issue.
Brian, just sort of a general question, but if somebody can't meet one of those items, but they really want to have their tractor trailer in the back or put their A D U twenty feet from the property line, not thirty feet. Would they then go to the Z B A and apply for a variance? Could they?
Technically, yes. You could essentially apply for anything, any variance of anything, as long as it's not a use. So for whether you're saying I need to park a second trailer or I can't park it in a certain location because of X, Y, and Z or this hardship, you could technically go to the Z B A and ask for a variance.
Okay, thank you.
Quick question on the the C D three W and C D four W designation there for storage of trailers, the the non-tractor trailers, but like I'm thinking of like the boatyards. You know, do we need to change it in your language to allow the boatyards to have more trailers on site? I'm not sure how many they they necessarily need to to store there, but that was something I thought of while while looking at this. I think in point one, they're under C F one for C D three W and C D four W.
All right, for these two, you wanna, okay, yeah, I have no issues with that. And we could always get into more specifics to say if it's associated with some sort of water-dependent use, you have more. Yeah, absolutely, sure.
I I'm not sure exactly what the standard should be, but yeah, if they have
Yeah.
Something, yeah.
Got it.
Nice catch, Chapin.
Brian, how about the pods that people get when they're moving or they're putting things into storage?
I believe we have, at least they wouldn't be addressed under this. I think we have separate regulations under the accessory use table specific to storage containers. They're separately regulated.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Yep. All right. So this next one, again, is that same sort of section with zones about vehicular parking requirements. One of the issues that we're running into is this new concept that was introduced to us which which were yards, like in specific, like rear yards. So a domestic vehicle is permitted in the rear yard only. The issue is that we used to say all parking had to be behind the front setback. Yards are have additional setback requirements to that. So if you're in the C D one S zone, your front setback is thirty feet, but your rear yard begins twenty feet beyond that. So technically, if you built your house with an attached garage at the thirty-foot setback, that your attached garage would have to be set back an additional twenty feet somehow in order for that parking space to be compliant. So that wasn't the intent. So what we're kind of proposing here is to go back to the way that we used to do it and say you can't you you can't park in that front setback. Or you can't create a legal parking space in that front setback, but your legal parking spaces can begin beyond the front setback, not in your rear rear yard to kind of alleviate that issue that I I don't believe was the intent behind the regulations. See what else we put here, because this was a, this was another substantive change. The other, you see the other issue here that we had raised was this max width of a street-facing garage could only be thirty percent of the total of the garage and facade width. So I put a little example here to say why that's a problem. So most of the, if you're in a C D one S zone or a zone that only has like fifty feet of street frontage, that regulation essentially makes it impossible or illegal for you to have an attached street-facing garage. So that wasn't the intent, and it's particularly not only problematic for those lots, but it's also problematic for lots in the flood zone where you're raising the property. And then usually what you do is you put the the two-car garage underneath. So technically, this regulation would say you can't even do that. So we're proposing for single-family zones to eliminate that requirement. And that kind of should hopefully get rid of essentially those those additional design reviews, that form-based kind of requirement that we had. We're hoping not to apply to single-family housing. So by eliminating this, that should fully remove sort of those those kind of form-based code requirements for for them.
Not a direct thing, I think, but something came up while I was reviewing it. Where did the eight and a half by nineteen come from for like a measurement for a parking space?
That's historically always been what our parking space dimensions have been. So that was a carryover from old regulations.
Gotcha. That feels like a really large vehicle to me, but I I don't know about cars. I I just worry maybe like measuring like the maximum vehicle you can get as a consumer versus like maybe the average vehicle a consumer could have.
Yeah, yeah, we can look at different dimension requirements as well.
Well, yeah, like I, we'll have to go measure my garage a little bit later and see. I don't, I don't know that it's eight and a half by nineteen. I'll have to look.
Gotcha, okay. And then the last one kind of is a mixture of those last two that we had gone over, which were parking spaces having to be in the rear yard, rendering attached garages to be non-compliant. Again, that was not the intent. So by allowing for the garages to have the same setback as the principal structure in the parking spaces to be permitted just behind the front setback, this would allow for those attached garages to be again legal and allowed in the future.
Brian, did any of this take into consideration like with these garages and facing the direction and whatnot, and assuming that there's a driveway attached to every garage, that it would then take up too much hardscape?
Yeah, so under the impervious surface memo that Steve had put together, we are proposing a way that you would be able to have those driveways access that two-car garage and hopefully not exceed your impervious surface coverage. We're also proposing changes to the driveway width requirements, which we'll get into later. Because again, the problem, if you have, if the driveway maximum width under zoning was ten or twelve feet, but you have a two-car garage, technically, one of those spaces may not be able to access that driveway. So we're going to propose to fix all of this, get these parking spaces legal again, and then have the driveway be wide enough to to access those spaces.
Okay, and was there, was there something that we had that you couldn't have front-to-back parking? So if somebody only had a one-car garage.
Yeah, so we're, yeah, so tandem parking spaces. So we're still, and we have this in here as well, proposing not to permit it, but we're giving additional options to folks that, such as like a parking court, that they could potentially do in their front front setback.
You mean, what's a parking?
Yeah, so they could do like permeable pavers that would create legal parking spaces for them. We're proposing that they could also put in a backup key, and then they could, and they could use that as a parking space. It it won't count as like a legal parking space, but they would be able to park in it, and we're not gonna send them a violation. We're gonna say you are permitted to park there, even though it doesn't create a legal parking space. So hopefully it gives people options to to accommodate all their cars.
Thank you.
Sure. So again, here are the fixes that we're proposing, which we had just discussed. In that same vein, for the thirty percent facade limit for garages, we're still proposing to keep that for two-family dwellings. What that does is it still requires that parking for two families really go behind the structure. And it continues to require sort of those covered porches at the front of the duplexes. And what that does is it just adds to that visual aesthetically pleasing duplex as opposed to kind of getting a box above a two- or four-car garage. So we're hoping that this while we increase the the ease of getting a two-family, hopefully this lets kind of that that some encourages more people to do it that that look kind of that that way that we're hoping that they look. And then same thing, but this is for like the mixed-use zones. So you can do a single-family house in a C D three, which is a multi-family zone. So we're saying if you do a single-family house in a in a C D three zone, we're not gonna hold you to that thirty percent garage requirement. I apologize for the formatting. This was done in OneDrive, which messes up formatting. Then the next same section, again, this vehicular parking requirement section in each of the zones. One of the things that I didn't contemplate was the term vessel. Vessel is used. You could see the definition here, which is about boats, yachts, ships, canoes, kayaks, paddleboards, jet skis, or recreational or other watercraft. What's difficult about the vessel definition is when you go into a single-family zone, we want to say, yes, you can store vessels behind the front setback or what have you. But we're not necessarily saying you can store your yacht or multiple yachts. That's where, you know, massive ships getting stored on a single-family house. But we also don't want to say limit you on how many paddleboards or jet skis, you're not necessarily jet skis, but kayaks or paddleboards. Like, that's kind of getting really nitty-gritty and not what we're trying to do. We don't want someone to say, hey, my neighbor is storing two paddleboards on his property. That's a violation of the zoning regulations. So we're, we're gonna add in vessel to this chart, make it permitted with limitations in the rear yard, and then we'll address those limitations later within this.
Brian, I have a question about the vessels.
Sure.
There's a big difference between a yacht and a paddleboard. And you are regulating where they can be. So for instance, if you are in a C D I S zone, you're, you may have a house that has a front entrance on the water side. The garage and the rear entrance are on the street. So even if you're calling the street the front, it's really for the use of the house, the back. For the use of the house, the back. So you're going to wind up with that stuff either on the. Street side or the water side, whereas most people keep it on the side yards, which is pretty innocuous. True. Especially the smaller. Um, personal watercraft.
Yes, I'll highlight rear yard only and see if we can. Put in some language that gets. That addresses that. Okay. Good point.
Thank you. Bri- Brian, are you defining what a yacht is?
Unfortunately, yacht does not have a definition. So anything capitalized is defined, anything that's not isn't.
Matter of opinion, Lou. Could be two hundred feet. Could be fifteen feet and it's a yacht to somebody.
I think when we get to the lim- I'll see if if within the limitations, if that helps us out any. Any, or we could also always pull up the definition of boat and ship and see if it's bigger than a boat or a ship, maybe it's a yacht. Let's see. Otherwise.
On the smaller end for uh like storing in the side yard, you know, ma- maybe look at like non-motorized or something like that. Like I I'm not sure exactly the language should be, but something in that um, something in that vein is. Feels the right direction.
Got it. Yeah. All right. So this was um to. Totally resolve the parking in the rear yard versus behind the front setback requirement. Again, what we need to do is we need to widen the width of the driveway to accommodate two parking spaces side by side. Uh, so what we're proposing is that in the CD one L, so this is the larger lot zoning. That the driveway. We're going to get rid of the minimum width and we're going to say that the maximum width can be ten feet for the first twenty feet. And then beyond twenty feet, a maximum of twenty feet wide. And then we have kind of these parking court or backup space allowances, uh which again we'll address a little bit later. So again, you can go back twenty feet on your property with a maximum width of ten feet, and then beyond that, you can widen it up to twenty. And then when you get into other zones, which are the smaller ones, um, we're going to say. I should say. Uh, it it would be a ten foot max within the first ten feet or the first ten feet back and then widen to twenty feet. This one was a result of. If you remember, we had the B residence zone, which was the smaller single family zone lot. And we we wanted to add in the new zone to essentially mirror that zoning, which was called the CD one S. Because that zone was added in late, some language that we were deleting for all of the other single family zones. Made its way into that regulation. So this is a requirement that the ground floor elevation for houses in that zone be a minimum of eighteen inches above grade. And a max of thirty six inches above grade, subject to flood hazard zone regulations. We're proposing to delete that because it's not a requirement in any of the other zones. We intentionally deleted it from the other zones. So we're just kind of match that up. Uh, this is uh regarding parking courts, which are again these uh allowances to let you park. Uh, up to two vehicles in your front setback, provided that they uh are, they meet all of these conditions here. So screening uh permeable pavers, things like that. Uh, it's just fixing some of the language again, because when it was originally written was under this concept of yards. So again, because we're not using that rear yard requirement anymore, and we're going back to beyond the front setback. Uh, we're we're proposing to switch it back to say setback instead. So again, this is allowances for you to put two parking spaces in your front setback, provided it meets, your lot meets all these conditions, and then you screen it and. Provided through permeable pavers. Back to vessels. So this is the limitations that we are proposing. So we put a a new limitation in saying storage of vessels. And looks like. We put in here no more than one boat, which shall be stored in the rear yard only. And then we said no ships or yachts. And again, this is specific to um. Your single family zones, so the limitations would apply, these limitations would apply to the single family zones. So what this does is it says, we're not going to tell you how many. Paddleboards you can or cannot have on your property. Uh, we're, we're just going to. Say that it needs to be in the rear yard, but when you get to those bigger ships, like a boat, you can have one and then no ships or yachts. Those are, I think are more sizable structures that you expect to see more with marinas or boat yards than you would on a residential lot.
Brian, wouldn't it make more sense to have a um. A length limitation than saying no ships or yachts?
We could do that. I think the only thing we'd have to do, I can look at the definition of ships. Yeah, it it would be, it it either be putting a length limit here, or we'd be looking at the definition of ships and then or and or creating a definition of yachts. And then, yeah, either way, it can be accommodated. I guess it just depends on where it gets put.
Yeah, the only difference differentiation for yacht is that it's uh for luxury. Uh, and usually those go into a marina, uh but length actually makes a lot of sense.
Next one is for retaining walls. So there was a uh. Minimum setback retaining walls had to be in the CD one S and the CD two zones, with a smaller single family lot in the two family zone. That required retaining walls to be further setback than a typical structure could be. So we're proposing just to make that uh to lessen the setback from a ten foot minimum to a five foot minimum for retaining wall in those zones. Again, a ten foot setback, when you only have fifty feet of width, is is pretty substantial. Um, so going down to a five foot lot would. Make it more consistent for those zones. I believe it also aligns it with our our grading requirements or maximum grading requirements. Next one's relatively easy. This was the fix for how tall obstructions could be for corner lots or at driveways. Uh, our requirements used to say three feet, but the DPW standard was two feet. So we're proposing to bring that down to the two foot requirement. So we're consistent with DPW.
Brian.
Yes.
Sorry, two things. Um, can you go back to the? Yes, the setback requirements, the minimum setback. For retaining walls. I'm just curious, if somebody goes for a permit for a retaining wall. Do they need to have a survey or do they just apply for a permit? And the reason I'm asking is because um in some new sidewalk building situations, uh there was kind of a. Disagreement over where somebody's property line ended and where the city's right of way began. So how do you determine? That ten feet?
Yeah, so usually what happens is if you are proposing to do something extremely close to the setback, we're going to require you to get a survey. Um, because that's the only way to guarantee that you're put going to put it in the right spot. If you're on a large lot and you're proposing to put a retaining wall that's forty feet away from any, any property line, we're probably not going to require you to get a survey for that. Because you're so far away from from everything.
Great, thank you.
Uh, extended stay hotels. So this is one um. That we have an application before us for one and potentially uh additional ones in the future. So one of the things with extended stay hotels is they're very similar to an apartment building in which uh people are staying there for a relatively extended period of time. So that the way they act similarly, we're proposing to treat them similarly. So that uh the density between the number of extended stay hotel rooms matches up with uh the density allowed for multifamily. Uh, so that. Just in case uh you get an extended stay hotel that comes in, um and then eventually it doesn't work out. But they want to change to apartments. We don't want it to cause any issues in terms of letting them convert from an extended stay to apartments or apartments to extended stays. So we're proposing that whatever the density is within that zone that allows both of those uses to apply it uh to both. ADU is accessory dwelling units, uh proposing some changes to uh hopefully make it a bit easier, uh especially for some. Of those lots which were built with only one parking space and attached garage, and they have no room to provide any additional parking. So what we're going to say is, how the reg is written now is you need to provide. A total, it ends up being of three parking spaces to do an ADU, because you're supposed to have two parking spaces for the single family dwelling plus one for the ADU. So what we're saying is, let's just. Say, if you only have one existing legal parking space, then you only need to provide one more parking space for the ADU. We're not going to say, oh, no, go back in time and put that second parking space in for your single family house plus the the third. So we're going to say just one additional space, and we're going to say it can also be provided via that parking court that we're going to let you um construct as long as it meets those standards. And we also put this caveat in. That you can't take your existing legal parking space. And convert that to the ADU and then say, oh, but now I'm going to use my parking court for my parking spaces. We're going to say, no, you keep your legal, you have to keep your legal parking space. We'll let you add those additional ones and exchange. You can construct the ADU on your property. Again, hopefully this makes it easier for those lots which are that are very tight and have no chance of adding two additional parking spaces without demoing part of their their house.
So Brian, on on these houses that are on these lots that you're proposing this change, is there going to be? Um, an additional requirement that on-street parking is allowed in the in whatever this area is?
So on-street parking would be, since we don't. We don't manage on-street parking, um, we wouldn't be able to have a say to say it's only allowed if on-street parking is permitted in your in on your street. So what they'd have to do regardless is do one of these parking courts most likely, in which case they're allowed to make it large enough to accommodate. Two additional parking spaces. So that ultimately gets them a total of three anyways. So hopefully, in any event. They they'd have to, if there's no parking allowed on the street anyways, they wouldn't be allowed to do it regardless of if they have the ADU or not. So they'd have to be parking within their driveway or within the parking court. I don't know if that answers your question, Rich.
Well. Not really, but okay.
Yeah, it's trying to find that balance of encouraging ADUs while also uh.
Uh, the the reason I'm asking that is, is that, you know, the the. Like the street that I used to live on is a is a prime example. The houses are. Um, on really nice sized lots, but were generally built with one car garages. And as we all know, that's. It's not adequate these days. And you know, the the street has become um. You know, almost impossible. I I always wonder what would happen if a fire truck had to get down it. Uh, because there's so many cars parked out on the street, but the lots are big enough that accessory apartments could could be put in. They're like little, they're they're quarter acre lots. And I just wonder about, now that's the opposite of what I'm talking about. There is, there is parking allowed on the street there. There just happens to be no room. But if it was a street that didn't allow on-street parking like where I live, um, I I don't know what would happen.
Something for us to keep in mind. Okay. Next is a easy one. It's moving the for home offices or home occupations. Um, there's limitations associated with those, like what what's allowed to be a home office or home occupation, but it was put into the definition rather than within the limitations. So we're proposing to take the portion of the definition that discusses what's allowed to be a home occupation and just move it into the limitation section. So it's not really a change, it's just a relocation. Uh, this is a big enforcement one. Uh, so it's regarding storage of commercial vehicles. How we currently define a commercial, not necessarily how we define the commercial vehicle, but the limitations that are placed on the storage of commercial vehicles. Is it uses um this one ton rated capacity requirement. A one ton rated capacity is not an easily accessible um. Statistic or a number associated with vehicles, but when you are able to find it, what you'll find is that um any of these trucks are. Over a one ton rated capacity. So technically, you could say if you own two Nissan Frontiers and you're storing them on your property. That you're violating the storage of not more than one commercial vehicle on your property. So uh what we want to do is go into the limitations and remove the one ton rated capacity rating. And change it to a gross vehicle weight rating of fifteen thousand pounds or a payload capacity of eight thousand pounds. That's a much more easily searchable uh number and applies more uh easily to. Larger, you know, that's when you start to get to your box trucks or your F three fifties, things that are more typically associated with um. Vehicles requiring commercial license plates or, you know, um, you know, contractor businesses. And then the other thing that we use um to differentiate would be the definition of commercial vehicle. Um, which kind of goes into the the commercial license plates, the lettering, the markings, the racks, all those kind of things can help us. Um, determine if it actually is a commercial vehicle and then then um that'll help our enforcement process. So that was a big one that they wanted to get addressed. Um, this is a. It it looks like a lot, but it's the um encroachment table, which again is a table that says. In certain circumstances, there may be things um on your lot that need to encroach into a setback. So if your house was built to the side property, to the side setbacks, and you want to put an HVAC system in. Um, that's going to go next to your house. So we need to give you the ability to do that. So these are things that customarily could go within a setback. Um, we're almost proposing like a complete overhaul of this um table, um, so we can go through each one if you'd like. So the first change is for, this is really just moving stoops from its own row into. A row with open porches, um, since they're similar and just saying they can't encroach into the front setback by. Um, any more than ten feet, and then they can't encroach into a side or rear property um setback. Patios, um, one of the other issues with this table was there were things that were permitted across the board without any limitations, maximums or anything like that. And they're not things that we typically wa- want to issue a permit for. So I think the table was saying you're permitted to do it. But by saying you're permitted to do it, it also means you have to come in and get a permit to do it, which we didn't want necessarily for all of these things. For example, underground utility lines. You don't need to come into planning and zoning and get a permit from us to do underground utility lines, because we usually only deal with things above the ground. So rather than say permitted, we're saying it's not regulated by our department. Uh, but those are things that may customarily go in uh into setbacks. So we're saying they can encroach, but they're not for our department to determine um or to issue a permit for. Similarly to like mailboxes, I think they were included in here. Those are not things that you don't have to come to planning and zoning and get a permit to put a mailbox in. Um, and then ones that were permitted across the board, um, that we do want to issue permits for, those are the ones that we we put kind of maximums on. So like balconies and bay windows to say those are permitted to encroach by no more than two. Which is consistent with the old regulations. Next was commercial recreation establishments, which is a use um. With, you know, typically like it's the indoor tennis court or volleyball court or pickleball court. The use was permitted within the CD three C zone, but the parking was. Required commission review. So what we're saying is change the use to be permitted with limitations. What we need to do is we don't want to necessarily make all of these come to the commission. If somebody's coming in and it's an existing strip plaza and they're putting in. You know, like a two. you know, like a two-court pickleball court, we don't want them to have to come to the commission, that's a pretty simple change of use permit. So we're gonna come back to you guys with a size um trigger to make it come to the commission instead of sending all of these guy, all of these applications to you. Uh, this was about tandem parking, it just says that tandem parking is not allowed unless the regulations say they're allowed, so there are for, I think it's for hotels or valet services. Those, and there's a section of the regulations, you can do tandem parking in those circumstances, so essentially saying everywhere else you can't do tandem parking. Um, this is just a rewording of a regulation, it would it'll apply the same. Um, so it's just rather than saying off-street parking in zones other than these ones, it's gonna just say here are the zones where these apply. A little bit more straightforward. Um, this is one that Steve drafted and what it is is it's really a safety issue, it's a a requirement to put in a backup area. So if you're um like constructing a new single-family house and um in a zone that I think it's specific to um maybe uh just a single-family zones that you have to put in a backup space so that you are not backing into the street. Um, and then it allows essentially all uh it it'll be mandatory in certain circumstances and then discretionary um and other uh other lots.
So Brian, let's say it was in a small zone and by putting the backup space, you then went over the lot coverage. Which would you pick, the backup zone or the lot coverage?
Yeah, so we would say, and again, when we go, when we do the lot coverage one, hopefully that makes it so you won't go over that requirement, but what we would say is do it in some sort of permeable um paper, whether it's gravel or some sort of pavement that's permeable, um we would require you to do that.
Okay, I'm gonna ask you one more tough one, what if it, what if there was a big tree in the way, you gonna say cut down the tree?
Um, I guess, it depends on the configuration, right, cuz uh this is, so we're starting from scratch here, we're saying we have a fresh lot um with nothing on it. Um, so we would say-
Okay, the trees were already denuded.
Yeah, or if there's a tree there that you wanna keep, then figure out how to get that driveway installed to not cut down that tree and accommodate the backup space.
Okay, thank you, Brian.
And then this is just a quick little graphic. Subject to um graphic design profession. Um, this is a fix to driveway setback requirements. These two sections back-to-back contradicted one another, one said they cannot be closer than five feet to a side property line, the other one said twelve and a half feet. Um, we're saying let's delete one of those sections and lower it to a three-foot setback. Um, again, because some of these lots, there used to be none, so there there's a lot of folks who paved up to their uh side property line, so we're hoping that a three-foot setback requirement is enough to keep a landscape buffer between properties um and not cause any issues. This one um was about cutting down trees, um so how this reg, that there's two options here, so this is um the removal of trees is addressed elsewhere in the regulations and I can pull up that section if we wanna look at it. Um, so we don't think that this language is completely necessary since it's already addressed elsewhere within um tree, the tree removal section um in Article Six. But if we wanted to keep this, there's a way to reword it to say, if you're cutting down trees from whether it's a a a mixed use or a commercial zone that is it within so close of a residential zone that that's gonna uh require you to come in and get permits for, but how this is worded right now is it essentially reads that any tree getting cut down anywhere makes you have to come and get a permit, and that wasn't the intent for this regulation, it was more to provide those buffers between commercial and residential zones to say those are the trees that provide a buffer between completely separate uses that we wanna take a look at before you go ahead and do it. This wasn't meant to per- to stop people in a single-family zone from cutting down trees on their property. So I guess it it depends on what you guys would prefer, if you, we could pull up that other regulation and see if that adequately addresses it or we could just reword this section to to kind of say what I had just discussed.
Why not just reword it, Brian?
Sure, yeah, that's probably the safest bet, okay. Uh, that's an easy one, that's just to add the text as amended cuz the stormwater quality manual uh will change and be updated, so um that should be fine. This is in regards to a FEMA form, so this form is no longer used, they changed the name of it, so we're just saying, okay, let's change the name of it in our regs. This is about just kind of like wayfinding within the regulations is um to add reference to the sustainability requirements uh within Article Six, so it's gonna say, hey, um, here's sustainability requirements, you also need to go check on this section to to see what the specifics are. Um, this is a fix to the workforce housing language, um this was from the old regulations and it somehow got left out of these regulations, so we're saying to put it back in. Um, it's essentially, I think it's in the case of when there's fractional uh workforce housing units as a result of the number of units being proposed. All right, this one um I think was as a result of the Meadow Gardens development. Um, Mr. Bryce had asked us to kind of consider some updated language because when we're talking with the housing authority, they had said we were limited by um the number of parking spaces that were required, they essentially that was ultimately the constraint, one of the constraining factors on the number of units that they were able to put back into Meadow Gardens. So we wanted to come up with ways to um limit that, so you know, this might be a, let's see what the affordable housing study says. Um, but it's my stab at kind of in trying to incentivize um affordable developments and give them the ability to not be hampered so much by um parking and then to also kind of give some additional incentives their way, so um I had originally was thinking of it as like a fifty-fifty-fifty rule, so if your multifamily development contains a majority of uh units, uh so over fifty percent of the units provided at sixty percent SMI or less, then you don't have to exceed more than half a space per unit. Um, and you would be able to exceed the maximum density of the zoning district by up to fifty percent. Um, but in order to accommodate that, we can't just say, oh, here's a bonus in density if you're still capped by height, so we would have to consider adding in um a height bump. I proposed that for certain zones, a one-story bump and then for the more um intense zones, a one and a half story bump. Again, this is not one that you have to agree to tonight, um it's one that I kind of drafted for you guys to chew on, see what you think. Uh, we sent this to the housing authority cuz they have a potential project coming in over the next few months and they um they like it, it would work for them. Um, so uh I just kind of wanted to get get it on your radar that um this is a a possibility to kind of incentivize that.
Thank you for looking into this, Brian, uh I could spend a little bit more time with it, but thank you for uh presenting it.
Yeah, no problem. It would have been really cool if it was fifty-fifty-fifty, but we had to go with this, the sixty percent SMI because um usually like the housing authority, they, that's how they get their funding, like they get grants based on sixty percent SMI, not fifty percent, so we went with a more standard approach.
Fifty, sixty, fifty, I don't know, still has a little bit of everything to it.
Uh, next one is for signage in the light industrial zone, I mean heavy industrial zone, excuse me. Um, no signage is allowed in that zone, so we're saying just apply the same standards as a light industrial zone to the heavy industrial zone. Uh, this was specific to the zoning board of appeals and a section saying that if it's a historic structure and you're applying for a variance, that it has to go to the historical commission. Um, the issue with this is it, it's not clear what the historical commission is supposed to do and it's not clear what the zoning board of appeals is supposed to do with whatever the historical commission says, and then the historical commission doesn't necessarily have authority over a historic the historical commission has authority over city-owned historic structures, not privately-owned historic structures. So we, for the sake of not causing any potential litigation, are proposing to delete this requirement for our um CBA in variance applications.
Is there any other way they could get context on the historical aspect of the building? Um, I I I recognize there may be legal issues there, but.
Yeah, I think um I think there's other ways, I mean, we could always add in as part of CBA's considerations, I know they're more regulated by statute than they are by zoning regs. Um, but we can take a look at saying that they should take into account the historic um uh whether a building is historically registered or or something like that. Um, the next one is uh just a quick fix to uh the notice requirements. So special exceptions always require public hearings um which should be posted and mailed, so we're saying to fix this to add in for special exceptions that they need to also be posted and mailed to a butters. Uh, the posted sign requirement, so these are the actual physical signs that people now need to post on their property uh saying that there's a public hearing, so for like things like special permits, um text changes, variances, special exceptions. Um, the issue was that the regulation said all letters within this notice need to be at least four inches in dimension. Um, and what that resulted in were like six-foot by eight-foot signs, now that's not necessarily a problem for us. Massive sign on the property will certainly get the public's attention, they'll let them know that there's a public hearing. Um, but it might be over the top, so we're saying potentially we say that the letters notice of public hearing be four inches and then all other inch, uh all of letters be no more, um no less than two inches in height. So hopefully that kind of still makes the sign still be by three feet by four feet is the minimum size, um and hopefully it can fit on that three feet by four feet sign. Uh, this is a fix to uh the the posted sign requirement, um there was just contradictory language, once I had posted ten days before public hearing, the other said posted fifteen days, so we're keeping in here the fifteen-day requirement. Uh, more notice requirements, this is just um uh hoping to add more context to mailed notice. I think just a discrepancy between certified mail and certificate mailing versus return receipt requested, those kind of things. Uh, this is that silly fix for condominium units and apparently boat clubs have um condos which are lockers and that those are rented out and technically count as condos, so we're saying residential condos, not those kind of condos. Uh, this is to fix um the sustainable, sustainable building requirement, requirements. Um, so how this reads is it says, in the case of development in a special district, then you need to do these sustainable building requirements or that the commission considers those. Um, we want it to apply to all, so we're we're proposing to delete this text right here so that it applies to all zoning districts. Uh, a quick one, just so that, we're just proposing to delete this number, um so that this text would apply to the entirety of the section. Moving into definitions, uh this is to help enforcement staff differentiate or determine what is truly a boarding house, we get complaints about boarding houses and we have to go out there and we have to determine if it truly is a boarding house, the existing regulation or the existing definition wasn't really helpful for us to do that. Um, for example, they went out to a house and there were individual locks on each of the interior doors and the property owner said, well, that's just, you know, those are my, that's my family, um that's just how our house is set up. Um, so we're saying that's probably not true, so we're kind of trying to help uh really differentiate or determine what is a boarding house, we're putting in kind of that we can take into account things such as individual locks, such as deadbolts, latch keys and key locks on each individual rooming unit. Uh, and that some of this text is pulled from the health department cuz they're also worried about these kind of uses, so kind of to help enforcement staff have that ability to determine what is truly a boarding house. Um, this is to add in a definition of a building material storage yard, which is a use that's allowed in certain zones, but we need, we don't have a definition for it, so we're posing that definition. Uh, building coverage definition, same thing, we we mentioned building coverage, but we don't have a definition for it. Same goes for live music, this is pulled from the old regulations, this definition.
For live music, should we clarify it to be like amplified music, it feels more like the uh like matching what the definition is?
I think, yeah, I think if if this is satisfactory, I'm not sure, otherwise I can, I could always add in some fixed that's it's really supposed to be amplified.
Yeah, and so like my thought is, um, yes, I I agree with the definition, my thought is instead of having the term be live music, just have the term be like amplified music. So just changing the the first two word or the first word really, uh from live music to amplified, so not there, but like um literally the very first word, uh nope, not that one.
Oh, oh, I got you, the the first first word.
Yeah, yep, so yeah, changing that to be amplified music, I think that's more reflective of what the uh definition is, it might make more sense for uh folks who are reading uh in the various sections like that, oh, this does apply to me cuz I'm gonna have a DJ, right, and you know, they may think it may not apply to them cuz they're not having the live stands per se, yeah.
All right, the next was for corner lots, corner lots um inadvertently got um hit hard from new regulations. Um, so what we wanna do is go do this combination with uh the old regulations which were for corner lots, what is actually the principal frontage of the lot? Which we're gonna say is the narrower of the the two frontages as long as that meets the minimum requirement for that zone. Um, and what that'll do is right now, corner lots, it just says frontage instead of principal frontage, so we need to ensure that the principal frontage is the narrowest as long as it meets the minimum requirement. And that's where we're gonna start measuring things for like stories um or parking and things like that, so hopefully this a lot of the issues that come in right now, a person comes in with a property that's a corner lot and they're just proposing to do for a a garage addition and how we defined principal frontage is extremely problematic uh for those folks. This helps complete that fix, um saying that we measure stories from the principal frontage, not those, um not a secondary frontage or anything like that. Parking court, so this is that allowance to let you park in the front setback, provided it meets all those standards, putting in a definition of what that means, what that is. Uh, definition for a terrace, which I believe is one of the frontage types we allow to say what a terrace is. Um, and then fixing usable floor area definition, so this is really specific to things like restaurants. I was really excited with the new regulations because it changed their parking for restaurants from one parking space per forty-five square feet to one per one hundred square feet, and I said, this is great, it's gonna allow restaurants to more easily open, but they use this term usable floor area, which actually ends up being more restrictive than our old regulations. So this is what this is proposing is to pull out things where customers aren't usually gonna go, um or if it's there, it's like accessory to the restaurant, like bathrooms. Um, they're not gonna go into the kitchen, um and they're not gonna go into the back of house, it's all employee space. So we don't wanna count that towards their parking requirement, so um we wanna pull that out and then hopefully that actually does um remove some parking burden for restaurant uses. And I think that was it for that memo. I don't know if anyone had any questions, otherwise we can pull up Steve's impervious surface coverage memo.
Let's go to it.
All right, and if Steve's on, he can, I'm not sure if he's able to talk or.
Hey there.
There he is.
Uh Brian, blow that up just a bit.
Let me, my Zoom said it crashed. Am I here?
Better, thank you. The floor is yours, Steve.
All right, well, I'm gonna add lib because I cannot read that screen under any circumstances right now, so I'll give the high level overview and Brian will have to help um with the details piece of it. So kind of in essence, what happened was in in the old zoning code before we adopted the new one, we used to regulate solely in the residential zones solely did building coverage, and that basically is how much of the piece of property, a building or buildings can occupy. Uh the the new code mimicked what we have historically done in the commercial zones, which is look at impervious surface, which includes not only the buildings, but also the parking areas and and other hardscapes. The problem is, the the new formula that was applied was too restrictive, particularly in the smaller lot zones, which were formerly B-zone properties to C-zone properties. So basically, anything under like a quarter of an acre kind of got beat up a little bit with what was allowed in terms of the impervious surface coverage. Just going back and and really looking at the numbers and analyzing it more, there were also some problems with how not only the new regulations, but the old regulations calculated the allowed building coverage, because I I put an example in the in the memo that if you had a an A-zone lot of twelve thousand square feet, you were penalized, um not penalized, but weren't allotted the same amount of coverage that a similar-sized lot in the B-zone was allotted, so we we kind of spent a lot of time looking at two things, one, what's the right formula to make it equitable across all zones, and the second thing was looking at what's happening on the ground today, uh so we spent a lot of times in the smaller lot zones, looking a lot of places along the water, which had a lot of tight lots. And looking at what was there now in terms of building coverage and impervious surface coverage, and then kind of just thinking about why we want to regulate that and what what are the appropriate standards to apply. So I think we came up with a formula that's more equitable without forcing a lot of variances, a lot, a lot, and not forcing a lot of people to do something drastic with their property. So I think that's kind of the general idea of what we did. Um the analysis like coming up with that, like the max for any of these zones really is like a fifty percent impervious surface coverage, because if you look at the images that we provided, that that kind of accompanied the memo. They sh- you you can see really what the impacts are with those lots where they're fifty percent or more of the coverage. And we did put in a lever for lots to go above fifty percent, but no higher than sixty, but they have to provide some um you know, enhanced drainage features to go along with that, so that's kind of the crux of the change and why we propose what we proposed. Um happy to take any questions on that, and if Brian, if it's helpful, we could go through the numbers, but hopefully there's somewhat self-explanatory.
Yeah, I'm happy Steve did the math on this one, that's.
Yeah, and and I I'll say, and I think I put this in the memo, we did send this out to what we did with the coverage one, because it's a really more about, pretty technical piece of it in terms of the calculations. That we we've worked with the engineers and surveyors that the city does business with a lot. I got one email back last night and I think it was more the, you know, the one point of contention they brought up was more a philosophical one, where we shouldn't be regulating impervious surface coverage and leading that up to uh Public Works, but Public Works looks at runoff in terms of o- only really how it affects uh budding properties or how it impacts the city street um you know, drainage pathways and stuff, so I think our purposes are a little different, so which is why we're recommending, you know, keeping that impervious coverage, but also looking at the building coverage as well.
Uh Steve, I have a couple of questions, it's Tammy.
Yep, go ahead.
Um so I'm not looking at the screen that you are, but I have the memo pulled up on my computer. And it says um under proposed changes to coverage determinations, and then sort of the second quasi paragraph down. It says building coverage um in CD one L and CD one M twenty-five percent. And thirty pot, thirty-five percent impervious ser- surface coverage, so that's sixty percent. So you're saying okay to sixty percent in.
No, sorry. So it's it's it's, yeah, and and I can clarify that if it's if you're picking it up that way, I'll rewrite it, but it it means twenty-five percent building coverage, thirty-five percent total impervious.
Total, okay.
Because impervious surface by definition includes the buildings as well.
All right, well, then I think, I think, I don't know if my fellow commissioners agree, but I think that should be clarified, because I've been reading through this and I've been practically having a heart attack about that.
Yeah, no, yeah, because I didn't write it that way, just because the definition of impervious surface includes buildings. But I can clarify that for the memo, so everybody else picks up.
Right, great, thank you, and it it takes place in a couple of other um situations in there as well, so please, it's not just that one spot.
Yep, no problem.
Okay, thank you. I loved all the aerial photos, by the way, that they were great, and it especially, I think in the smaller zones, it's even more important to have less impervious surface because and in the smaller zones and in the smaller zones that are in the flood zones. Because there's no place for the water to go, and the Crockett Street, those photos, those aerials with the I mean, it's nuts what we've let happen down there. Too much coverage.
Any other questions on this memo for Steve or for Brian? Okay. Anything else, Brian?
No, just that I know Steve's working on the height in the flood zone memo, so you'll hopefully get that soon. Um and there's a couple other ones that we're still working on to to address some items that we're kicking around. So you might get some more memos from us in the in the near future.
Yippee.
Yeah.
Sorry, can I ask another question?
Go ahead, Sammy.
I'm sorry, but but as you drive around town and you look at commercial lots that are basically one hundred percent lot coverage impervious paved up to the nines. If somebody wants, if one of those homeowners or property owners, excuse me, comes in and says well, I want to do something to my property. Do we have any right to say, okay, yeah, you can do that if you dig up some of this pervious, impervious surface and make it impervi- pervious, you see what I'm trying to say? Sorry, I'm really tired today, but you know, let's try to be proactive and make our our land that we have more drainable. I mean, we just saw what happened with all the rain the other day. And is there a way that we can get some of the tar dug up in places where it's too much coverage?
Yeah, I we can, we can take a look, I don't have a, I don't have an answer.
All right, if it wouldn't be if somebody came into, once it's there, it's there, it's grandfathered in, but I think we should think seriously about the commercial coverage. I know we ask people to do a lot more drainage, you know, cul-de-sacs and things like that, but think about the Route One corridor by where we're, you know, Wegmans and Costco and all of that. You know, some relief is needed there for water to get into the ground.
We we did do um uh in addition to relaxing some parking requirements, we put parking maximums in, so there's, you know, there is a cap on potentially they could cover more with the building, but the the asphalt area itself um is is actually more limited now than it than it had previously been.
Okay, well, let's encourage landscaping that's, you know, not asphalt.
Yeah, the the other tricky part of that is if it's one thing like a, like a Wegmans is an easier one because it's a new construction, but when you have like a basically when they just reuse the existing building and they're not proposing any changes, but it's a new use, then it's 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 a from a legal standpoint, I it's it's a little tricky to go back and say, you know, you gotta rip out you know, eight, even, so I think it's easier for us if we take a position that they they're overparked or something, but I think from a saying you have to rip out parking spaces sometimes isn't from a legal standpoint, I don't know if we're on solid ground with that, but that's, it's a good question.
Okay, just something to keep in mind as we're trying to make, you know, better drainage all over the city.
One other thing relating to um impervious paint um paving. And I'll use an example, there's a a multi-family, I guess it's a condo on East Avenue that's sideways in the lot, and the driveway is also the front yard of the facility. So it is asphalted right up to the whole door, so there's no grass or anything between the asphalt and the door. People have their lawn chairs out on the asphalt, it's really very sad. But is there any way to discourage that in with within the zoning regulations?
Because you can't can't build a building like that under these new regulations. So we actually require you now to put the building up to the street and then to put the parking in the rear or underneath, so yeah, that that building would.
That building is not very old, you know the one I mean?
Yeah, yeah, I know which one you're talking about, yeah, you would not be able to build that, I think we had done the EBTZ reg, I'd say you wouldn't allow a building like that, and then in the new regs now in any mixed-use zone, you wouldn't be able to build a uh have the lot be configured like that.
With the asphalt going right up to the door.
Right, yeah, yeah, we want you, we actually, we have the maximum setbacks that the building has to be within, and then all of the parking has to be screened into the rear, can't be in front of the structure.
Okay.
But we agree, yeah.
Anything else?
I just wanted to, one other thing you will see a memo on is uh related to the waterfront clubs. The 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 problem is that they're all in residential zones and we're applying residential standards to the clubs. And I think that was a problem in the old regulations too, so it's like the, you know, you could think, if you think about it, they have big parking areas, they have uh you know, so lot coverage for a club is different for than it would be for residential use, just based on the the nature and intensity of the site, so we're working with a couple of different attorneys who represent the majority of the waterfront clubs to come up with a kind of special permit standards for the waterfront clubs, so you'll see a memo on that probably in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, anything else from commission members? Okay, Brian. No, go ahead, Chapin.
That's all, there's a thing, thanks for putting this memo together and presenting it.
All right, um.
So Dylan is trying to say something.
No, I'm sorry. Are we ready to adjourn? Is this the end of the?
Well, we have minutes, you're you're quite right, unless there's more on this, we have uh the minutes and uh then comments of commissioners and then adjournment, so we're pretty close.
Good.
All right, is there anything else uh on um uh these matters? All right, if not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes of our August seventh meeting. Richard has moved, Hector has seconded, uh we can do this with a show of hands, all those in favor.
I have two things.
I wasn't here.
Okay, JJ was not here.
I was here from the beginning, but not the.
Okay. Uh next, uh Steve, any further comments?
No, nothing, thank you.
Okay. Uh comments of commissioners.
Uh no, actually, if uh from the conversation about the expansion of the NHRL building, I was there in March, if you're interested to see, I have photos and videos of how the uh the whole system works, it's really, really interesting.
Um maybe you could forward one or two of those uh to uh Steve or Brian and they can make him available to us.
Perfect.
Right, and I I got your, I got your email that just about about the boats.
Yes, that was helpful also, thank you. All right, um I will um welcome a a motion to adjourn. Hector is, I'm a lot of hands up there, Hector has moved, Chapin uh seconded, and I'll just remind you, our next meeting is September fourth. Uh look forward to seeing you all then. Till then, take care.
Bring a cake for you, Mr. Solomon.
Bye-bye.
Good night.
Night.